Right, thank you members. First time I've had the opportunity to use the gavel. Give you a feeling of power. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting. Are we happy to confirm the minutes of the previous meeting?
Agreed.
Agreed. Second item is apologies and substitutes, Emma, please.
Yes, we have apologies from councillors Val Henry and Dennis Lee. Ross Welling is just running slightly late and councillor Patricia Ellis is here to substitute.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
None before the meeting.
Fine. A question from members of the public. We have one question from a member of the public, Heather Haller. So if you can come down to the front and sit there, Heather, please.
Okay, thank you. So with reference to the committee's briefing and discussion on loneliness and social isolation at their meeting on November 2018, can you provide an update on what Waverley is doing to expand the reach of activities that address loneliness and social isolation such as men in sheds in Cranley and the Otago Falls prevention classes in Hazelmead and Farnham? And whether there are any plans to provide social support for new mothers in view of the planned closure of the Surrey County Council Children's Centres in Hazelmead and Farnham?
Thank you for that question, Heather. We have a written answer which I think you've been provided from Katie Webb, who is our community services manager, and I'll read it out in a minute. But before I do, I'd just like to say, I think this is a very important question, actually, the question of loneliness. And our vice chairman, sitting this side, Liz Wheatley, has actually recommended to us as a committee that next year we consider doing a task group on loneliness. So that's something that this committee will be thinking about next year. It is a very important question. But let me now read out the response from Katie Webb. The communities and leisure services team continues to work in partnership with the voluntary sector, statutory organisations and places leisure to deliver activities and services across the borough, both in community settings and Waverley Leisure Centres, promoting them to the wider community. The council is embarking on a review of its Aging Well Action Plan, and this will include reviewing preventative services and activities to help address loneliness, ruleable isolation with Waverley's older residents. Support from carers, particularly older carers, increases the Let's Get Steady Programme across the borough, the offer for older people at Farnham Memorial Hall, and activities for people living with dementia. Waverley's leisure team are working partnership with places leisure and health colleagues to plan and deliver a number of projects, although not specifically to address loneliness and social isolation, it is a significantly beneficial by-product. These include extending Otago provision across the borough, Sandy Hill activities, Friday Night Project with young people, already launched and extremely successful in Cranley, and due to launch in Farnham in the spring, and the forever active programmes at the leisure centres for older people. In relation to providing social support for new mothers in view of the planned closure of the Surrey County Council Children's Centres in Hazelmead and Farnham, although it is not directly part of Waverley's remit to fill this gap, there are opportunities through activities at the leisure centres and through arts and cultural organisations, including the maltings in Farnham. Thank you very much for your great question, Heather, and I hope you're happy with that answer. So we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Farnham Post Office report. And we have to first of all thank Mark Gibson, the External Affairs Manager from the Post Office, for coming along to answer our questions. I did notice that Mark actually is the External Affairs Manager for Scotland and Northern Ireland. We in Farnham have a bit of a reputation for being an awkward bunch, so I know being Scottish myself and Mark being Northern Irish, they tend to be the awkward people, so that's perhaps why Mark's been selected to deal with this. So over to you, Mark, if you can tell us what the post is planning for us.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Firstly, I appreciate the invite and thanks for having me along. Hopefully you'll understand the accent. It's good to know that I'm not the only one here with an accent, so that's a positive. I thought it might be worthwhile if I took five minutes maybe to explain about the post office. And I know a lot of people have a perception of what the post office is, and invariably it's correct, but there's some misconceptions that can be taken up. The one thing that is genuinely a misconception is that we are not Royal Mail effectively, so we don't deal with the letter business, the post boxes, the prices stamps and those type of things. So that's all part of Royal Mail, which was privatised some years ago. And that's quite a key distinction because we purely look after the high street branches, the village branches and those outlets throughout the country. We have eleven and a half thousand branches throughout the country, and only just over two hundred of those are what we would call directly managed branches. The other eleven thousand three hundred branches are effectively independent agency-run branches. They're run by small independent businesspeople, sub-postmasters, as we call them. And these are run on a basis of the remuneration is paid based on the amount of transactions that they do, and that's how a post office works primarily, with the exception of just over two hundred what we call directly managed branches. And these are legacy branches from some years ago. Round about five years ago, we undertook a massive transformation programme, actually the biggest transformation programme in all of Europe for retail outlets. And that was effectively looking at the challenges that is there on the high street and looking at the change that is happening. We realised that we had to be open longer, we had to be there more convenient for our customers, we had to be easier to deal with and easier to work with, and we had to ensure the future of the post office network going forward. And to boil all that down without going into too much detail, that effectively meant that we had to be part. A post office as it stood alone just was no longer in many, many places a viable option. It needed to be part of a vibrant retail offering for it to be sustainable going forward. We were able to, through that transformation, we transformed about seven and a half thousand branches. We were able to increase opening hours by over two hundred thousand a week, and many of those six thousand or seven thousand five hundred branches are opened on a Sunday as well. That has made us more relevant to our customers, who are wanting to drop off parcels or packages at a time that's convenient to them, either coming from work or going to work, that type of thing. And we've seen that the actual usage of our post offices out of hours has increased quite dramatically. So by doing this, we believe that we have secured the network. But that left us with what we call these directly managed branches with the same challenges, and we had to look at what we needed to do with those branches. Five years ago, those two hundred branches were losing forty-six million pounds, just those two hundred branches out of eleven and a half thousand branches. And this left us with a very dramatic challenge that we had to reduce that cost to the taxpayer effectively, is what it was at the end of the day. We've managed to do that and get break even, but if we don't continue to change, then we're not going to be able to sustain that network. So what a proposal is effectively to move the current directly managed branch into the WH Smiths in Farnham. The idea behind that is that we need to keep our post offices on the high street. We think that's critical, we think it's vital to our future, and we think it's vital to our customers as well, that we have the post offices in the high street, in the towns and villages, and there where people need them. And the way we see doing that is by moving the post office in the WH Smiths, and we believe this will secure the future of that branch going forward. Now, we understand that brings us to own challenges, and that's why we've embarked on the six-week public consultation process. We want feedback on the proposal. And as I said earlier, don't get me wrong, we wouldn't have went to a public proposal if we hadn't have thought we'd done as much homework as we have done, that we hadn't covered as many of the bases that we felt we needed to cover. That said, we're not fallible, and there may be things that we've missed, and we want that feedback to come in to us. So it isn't a done deal, the consultation is far from a done deal. We believe we've done a lot of work before we went to a proposal, but we want feedback from yourselves, from the public, into that. Consequently, next week I'm going to be holding what I call a customer forum event, and the idea of that event in Farnham Library is for customers to come along, give us concerns, give us questions, seek clarification on any queries they may have, so that we can get a fuller idea. The consultation finishes on the sixth of March, so that gives us a chance before the end of that to do that. Just one point I want to sort of make if I can, is that the post office is a social entity, but it's also a commercial entity. And it's this conundrum, if you like, that we're always trying to battle against, because we need to be, we see ourselves as a commercial entity with a social heart. We have a hundred and seventy, over a hundred and seventy products that we provide. Only one of them we own. Every other product that we provide is done on behalf of somebody else, and we invariably have to bid and tender for that. So for us to keep continuing to win that work, to continue to be, to bring that income in for our postmasters, therefore to continue to have post offices on our high streets and on our towns and villages, we need to be as efficient as we possibly can, but we need to be as relevant as we possibly can. And again, we believe this helps us to be both going forward. I really don't want to take up too much time, because I know you've got, I mean, I've tried to condense that as much as I possibly can.
Thank you very much for that, Mark. Before we come to the members of the committee, there's two non-members here, and if you can start with councillor David Beeman with his question.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My name is councillor David Beeman, and I represent Farnham Castle Ward, which is in fact where the branches located. This has obviously aroused a lot of emotions in the area, let me say that. I mean, on three half-days, we had eighteen hundred signatures asking to keep the post office where it was. In fact, they were queuing up, you didn't have to ask them, they were just queuing up to sign this piece of paper. Right, but first of all, I mean, I don't want to get too involved in your sort of commercial position, I understand your commercial position, I'm not trying to interfere in that. It's just there are other issues, I think, that need to be borne in mind. One is that the fact that the building shares with the sorting and delivery office, and we wondered if, you know, is that going to change as well? Because that has implications for other parts of Farnham in the sense of the delivery of parcels and collection of parcels. I think more particularly, it's in fact moving to Smiths. And as people in the, seeing in Farnham Earl, will see, you know, Smiths is not located in exactly the best position for Farnham. It's narrow pavement, it's a high level of pollution, and people who use the post office, you know, mothers, buggies and things, will find it difficult. Yet I do find it incredi-, today I went with my colleague councillor Hess, who's a town councillor for the same ward, and went into Elphick's, across the road from the post office. And we said, you know, you hear about the post office moving, has anybody asked you whether they'd be prepared to have the franchise in that building? And they said, no. So I wondered how many options you've actually investigated that would be, you know, could in fact provide a better alternative than WH Smiths. Thank you very much.
As I come, yeah. Thank you councillor for the question. I do fully appreciate, I've been in the post office thirty-five years, Royal Mail Post Office for thirty-five years, man and boy. I understand how important the post office is to communities, I fully understand that. And particularly in rural communities where the postmaster is probably the last bastion of that face-to-face service that exists, and many of them know their customers by name, some of them even know their PIN numbers, but we'll not mention that. So, you know, that's a vital thing, we don't want to lose that, we want to keep that, and I can fully understand why people did sign the petition. The true reality is, we want the same thing, we want to keep the post office in the middle of the high streets. With regards to the building that you spoke about, I mentioned earlier, Royal Mail is a private company, they own that land, they own that site. They were floated on the stock market, that was probably four or five years ago, maybe, somewhere along that, so they are a completely independent company. And actually, I was part of the team that sort of had the negotiations when we separated about the contract going forward, and from being sister companies, it was quite clear we were no longer sister companies, you know, they've got their own shareholders to meet. So with regards to the building, it's their decision, they own the building, and they'll have to say what it is they plan to do, if anything. With that building, we're not aware of any plans at the minute for that building going forward, so we don't have any say on it anyway, it's not our building, it is totally their building. I do take a point, and the chairman kindly showed me a copy of the paper that you referred to before the meeting, and I do, you know, it's a very powerful image that it shows. And that again is some of the things that we want to pick up in the consultation, so I would like to make sure that is fed through to the consultation. Unfortunately, I can't feed that into it, it needs to come from yourselves, so if you could make sure that is fed through, that would be very important. On your question of WH Smiths, we have, when we go to house a post office in a retailer, we want to make sure that retailer is a good fit for us. We've been working with WH Smiths since 2007, we have over a hundred and thirty branches with WH Smiths since then, so we're very confident that they're a good partner for us and a stable partner, they have their own post office management team, they know how to run a post office, they've got very good levels of customer service despite what you may believe from some people. We get very good levels of customer service coming back on the service that WH Smiths provides, so we believe they're a very good fit for us, and that's why we went with WH Smiths rather than the other provider that you mentioned. I hope that helps answer your question.
Thank you for that answer. Councillor Jimmy Edwards has asked us to call on at the end, and he's a member of the executive actually, so he wants to, in a sense, sum up a type of answer. So can I call on councillor Mike Hodge, who's another Farnham councillor to ask his questions?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm a Farnham Town councillor, and I know the high street very well in Farnham. I've got a couple of sort of practical questions for you to answer for me, please. WH Smiths is in a very restricted part of Farnham, and as councillor Beeman touched on just now, it has very restricted access via a very narrow pavement, and it's quite a crooked old flagstone pavement, and there's heavy traffic moving past that point all of the time. So you're going to have increased traffic into Smiths with all the people wanting to pick up their parcels and do their business and so forth. And I'm just wondering what sort of plans you have to ease access for people, maybe people carrying parcels and things like that into Smiths, because it is a very difficult place. And the second part of the question is, what about the internals of Smiths? Is something going to be done with the internals to ease access from the front door to the back, because it's a very long store? And I can imagine older people, less able people, having difficulty getting to the back of the store. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, thanks councillor. Please, I don't mean to be rude here, please don't take this as being rude, but the outside of Smiths, there's quite a lot of shops along there. Would that be deemed as acceptable for the normal traffic that's going up and down that street? I'm really not trying to be rude, sorry.
Well, it's fair to say that it's a very difficult spot for all of the shop fronts there, and, you know, people, and it's always a place of contention, if you like, dealing with the pollution, the traffic, the access on foot. If someone walks along, if someone goes along that footpath in a wheelchair, no one can get past them, they have to step out into the road with all that traffic to move about, so it's always a problem for all of the shop fronts across there.
Okay, well, again, that would be something that we would certainly want to hear in the feedback. To be honest with you, I don't think there's anything we as a post office can do about the outside of the street, i.e. we can't change the infrastructure of the road layout or the path, so it would certainly need to be something that we'd need to receive on the feedback. With regards to the internals, yes, there's a lot we can do, and it will be completely rebuilt. With regards to the post office part at the back, will be completely rebuilt, providing three counterpositions, two open plan and one fortress, what we call a fortress position. And all the aisles will be kept clear of all clutter and all displays or whatever like that, so they'll be, and all the aisles will be big enough for any motorised vehicle to get into the post office. So that will certainly be something that we can do and will do, and will continue to accept. It's actually something that I might, you know, if we were to decide to go forward with this, you know, even after that event, maybe try and get some groups along that would be interested in that type of thing, to make sure that it is amenable and is suitable for those type of access. But that's certainly our plans, and we do have a plan for the layout of it, you know, does include those parameters.
Thank you for that. Can I call on councillor David Elst to ask us a question?
Thank you, Chairman, I've got a couple of questions. You mentioned earlier that the post office provides a hundred and seventy different products. Will all a hundred and seventy be going into the back of Smiths, or will there be some changes to the services that you provide?
Yeah, simple one, thankfully. Yes, all a hundred and seventy, with the exception of ATM, the ATM won't be moving, but everything else will be provided from Smiths just as it is currently.
Thank you. And will there be an increased focus on self-service terminals and that sort of thing?
There won't be an increased focus on self-service terminals, there will be two self-service kiosks, and many of our branches do have these self-service kiosks. We find that people returning home shopping returns and that type of thing, it's very convenient for them to do that. But it's still, we still see ourselves as a face-to-face organisation.
And do you know what the customer footfall is to the current post office? Just, yes?
Yes, I do, yes. I do, but for commercial reasons, I'm not able to give that.
Are you envisaging, I mean, have you programmed in any reduction in those numbers or an increase in those numbers after the move?
That's an interesting question. Normally when we move a post office, we would look at the potential reduction, because people don't like, you know, people are creatures of habit and you change anything, people tend to move on. So we do look at a small reduction going forward, but we have a, we have a very detailed demographic and very detailed usage plan that has been over three hundred years in business, hopefully you'd like to think would know what sort of way things work. So we've got quite a range of where it can go to, so we go from a small reduction to a small increase depending on what happens.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Our next, can I ask our deputy chairman, Vice-Chancellor councillor Liz Wheatley to ask her questions?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you very much again for coming to talk to us, it's very, very kind of you. As you will know, of course, that Godalming used to have its own post office in its wonderful building at the top of the town. Then it went to Waterstones, then it got thrown out of there. It copes over the road, although sometimes at busy times, they are, people are queuing right the way down the high street, which perhaps isn't maybe the best. Bearing in mind, it was thrown out of Waterstones, how robust do you think is the deal with Smiths so you've got continuity? Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor, I'm sorry, my back's been used most of the time, my apologies. Again, that's a very good question, sort of relates to what was raised earlier. I cannot sit here and tell you in five years' time what business is going to be surviving, what isn't, you know, I wish I could, and I'd be a very rich man. We wouldn't have went to this point with Smiths, and as I say, we have a hundred and thirty-plus branches with Smiths, if we didn't feel that they were a secure and steady option for us. So we're very confident that they are. I mean, I think Smiths have something like sixteen hundred branches throughout the UK, so like us nearly, but they're certainly in every town centre, if not every village. So, you know, they're a very well-established brand, and we feel confident about that. That said, as I've said, who knows what the next five, ten years is going to bring. What I can tell you is that, you know, with a company such as Smiths, if there was any difficulties or any problems, that we would be trying to replace those branches as quickly as possible in a suitable location, but we don't see that being an option.
Also, we just wondered, please, what will be happening to the staff of the post office? Are they likely to move over to Smiths, or what's happening to them?
Thanks. The staff is, we take very seriously, and this is a very worrying time obviously for staff, any change is very worrying, but this is not a redundancy exercise, so every staff has a legal right to transfer with this work to WH Smiths. But we fully appreciate that that may not be what every member of staff wants, they've joined the post office, they may want to stay with the post office, and those staff that wish to try, want, wish to look at redeployment, we will try and find redeployment opportunities for them as well. Equally, there may be staff that this is a point in time where they want to do something different, and they want to try different things. So we will equally offer them a severance package, it's not a redundancy package because it's not redundancy. As I've said, they can transfer if they wish, but if they wish to do something else at this time of life, then we will be speaking with them to see if they want maybe a severance package. And so it's, each member of staff, as you can imagine, will have different options, different desires, different wants, but we're trying to work with them and give them as many options as we possibly can. We do pride ourselves on how we treat our staff going forward.
Thank you for that. Can I ask councillor Anna James to ask her questions, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Bearing in mind that Farnham is the largest town in Waverley, and apparently the third largest in Surrey, by closing the Farnham Post Office, does that not send out an enormous message that any post offices below that, being the largest one in Waverley, isn't a very good PR? And bearing in mind that the population of Farnham is going to increase even more, actually in the middle of Farnham, not on the outskirts, well, on the outskirts, but certainly a lot more people right in the middle of Farnham. Have you looked at that? Obviously, you know, it's a business, but if I was in somewhere like Cranley or something, I'd be really worried if you can't keep it going in Farnham. You know, they can't have a little voluntary one like, you know, got in Dunstfold and places like that. But it seems to me that we're going to be left with just a post office, probably in Guildford, a proper post office with all the facilities, because, and everybody is getting older and doing a lot more, even the older ones, online, and parcels, more parcels I think get returned probably than get delivered, that it seems the wrong time with all the planning coming in and Farnham being our biggest town to close that post office.
Thanks, Councillor. I don't want to pick up on semantics, but we really aren't closing Farnham Post Office. I know people say that, but we're only proposing to move the branch into WH Smiths. So please, and I say this wholeheartedly, because people do get the idea that a branch is closing and they stop using it, even though the branch hasn't closed, we're proposing to move the branch into WH Smiths. And the reason we're proposing to move that is for the future. What we want to do is to secure that post office for the future. The eleven and a half thousand branches I spoke about, only two hundred of them, just over two hundred of them are what we call directly managed, like Farnham. The vast, vast ninety-eight per cent of the network is run by an agent, in this case it would be proposed to be WH Smiths. So the idea that we're closing, as I say, isn't the truth. Equally, the idea that we're downgrading isn't the truth, because all the products and services that are currently being done will still be able to be done in the proposed new Farnham Post Office at WH Smiths. So by no means a downgrade. So the fact that Farnham is such a large town, it will still have all the products and services that it currently enjoys going forward if this proposal goes ahead. And the idea that the smaller branches should be worried is, again, that transformation that I spoke about some years ago. The whole plan behind that was again to make it sustainable going forward. We don't have any voluntary post offices, there may be voluntary organisations that run it, but every one of them receives a remuneration for the work that they do. So what we want to do is to continue to provide that face-to-face service in not just the big towns, but in towns and villages going forward, particularly when you see a lot of bank branches closing their branches. We can do all that work, so ninety-nine per cent of bank customers can use the post office to withdraw cash, to deposit cash, and we see that as a good bonus going forward for a lot of these towns and villages, that the post office is still there. So what we're trying to do actually is to secure the future of it and not close it and not say a closer.
Okay. Would you happen to have a Cranley councillor here with us, Patricia Ellis, who wants to ask about the possible future of the Cranley Post Office?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I appreciate we're here to discuss Farnham, but obviously as a Cranley councillor, we have a huge number of new properties coming to Cranley. There has been threats in the past to the post office in Cranley, and we do have a WH Smith. So is this your policy actually to move current facilities from the post office to branches at WH Smiths? And being very parochial, could you please tell me about the future? And being very parochial, could you please tell me about the future of the Cranley post office?
Thanks, councillor. I unfortunately don't know enough to be, to, to speak with any authority on the future of Cranley post office, other than there is no immediate threat to the future of it. Is Cranley currently within a retail outlet? It's standard on? Okay. So I, I don't know. It would be the honest answer. I couldn't, I couldn't give you any more information than what is currently, you know a lot more probably than I do about Cranley. Is it our policy? We, we have, in the last eighteen months, we've probably looked at, we've moved about seventy post offices into WH Smiths. So it is a policy, but it's not the only policy. Our policy is looking at all options to try and ensure the viability going forward. And that, that is the key to, to ensure that it's secure going forward. So what I can tell you is that we have no plans of closing Cranley. Just like we've no plans to close Farnham. That would not be our plans. The idea is to try and keep these, the network as it currently is. I'm sorry, councillor, that's not much of an answer.
Thank you for that. Can I ask, we have another Farnham councillor here, councillor Sam Pritchard. Do you have any questions, councillor Sam, that you'd like to ask?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for letting me come in. I was still writing the, the question when you were, when you invited me to speak. So I've got just a couple of questions, if you don't mind. One is, is it possible to not move? If it's not possible, then where else than WH Smith? And what will happen with the specific part of the building that is owned by the post office that is in its current location? I understand you were talking about the sorting office, but that's not yours. But what about the post office? And, sorry, finally. You know, I'm just interested to know, you know, how much of a loss of specifically the Farnham post office is there? Because, you know, that concerns me if we're not, if we don't have an answer to that, because obviously the economic stability of Farnham is a great concern for local residents. And, you know, we just wanted to know about that specifically. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. The, that building that I, that we spoke about is all owned by Royal Mail, including the post office element of it, if you like, where the post office is currently housed. So they own the sort, no, they, they own that whole infrastructure. When, when Royal Mail and ourselves split, all the buildings went to them. I, I tend to, it's like a divorce and they got the house, but anyway. So, so they own all the buildings and so, so that's another question. Is it possible for it not to move? Of course it's possible. That's why we're having a consultation on it. If the decision was that, that we had missed something and, and, you know, it wasn't a practical move or it wasn't the wise move to make, then, then it, then we wouldn't move it. You know, that's why we're having the consultation on it. Sorry, you asked for a second question after that?
Yeah. So obviously there's a reason why you want to move. What's the difference between where it is now? How much are you paying for, for Royal Mail and the WH Smith? Because I, I think that's what the residents want to know is why?
The, what I can't go into is how much we're paying or, or not paying for, for the current branch. And actually, to try and get the financial figures for a branch, even though we do have them, you'd need to include all the other back office stuff that goes on and support. What the, what I've said in the past or previously was that this is more about the future. This is more about securing the future of the network going forward. So whilst that network is breaking even at the moment, that, that, those two hundred and twenty directly managed branches is breaking even at the moment. Unless we make further changes, that will not continue to be the case. That will continue to go into a deficit or will move into deficit. Now, if we don't make changes, then we're going to need to, to cover that deficit. And currently the network depends on a subsidy from the government, which has been reducing significantly year in, year out. If we, and there's no reason why the post office should depend on taxpayers' money to stand on its own two feet. There's a lot of demands on taxpayers' money and that should be going to places such as health and police and whatnot, rather than the, the post office. So we believe we should be, stand on our own two feet. We believe we can stand on our own two feet. But more importantly, that until we get to the point where we actually stand on our own two feet and get to the point where we can invest then in the network going forward, we can then invest in the future technology, in the future, winning future contracts and those type of things, such as ID verification and those type, you know, those things that are going to bring the, the work streams of the future. We need to get to that point. So the reason why we're doing this is to get to the point where the network is sustainable and viable for the future going forward. And that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you for that answer. Can I ask councillor Ross Welland if he has any questions that he'd like to ask?
No, I don't, don't think so, to be perfectly honest. Any of the questions I would ask have largely been covered anyway. So, thank you.
Perfectly signed, thank you. Can I just ask a couple of smaller points, really? There'll obviously be some sort of transition. That's always a big issue, isn't it, moving things from one to the other? What sort of plan would you have in mind for the transition to make it easier for your customers during that period?
Normally, chairman, we would, would have quite an overlap of some weeks. So we would, if, in other locations where we moved to WH Smiths, we have opened the branch in WH Smiths one or two weeks prior to the closure of the, the previous branch. And that's to give customers a chance to get used to the, the new location.
Okay. You must be used to doing that by now, but it's interesting to know. It's obviously a good thing to have an overlap. Another question is that, I think your documentation say this is part of the continuing modernisation of the branch network. What would that mean in terms of Farnham or any other branch that's been moved into Smiths? What, what does modernisation mean in this context?
In this context, the modernisation speaks to where I spoke about those seven and a half thousand branches that were modernised and transformed. It meant, in some cases, it meant taking down the screens and being open plan and, and being a lot more customer friendly. It means being open longer. It means having technologies in there that are more suitable. So in some places where you maybe have a high meals volume, a self-service kiosk, the addition of a self-service kiosk is helpful. And it means having the infrastructure like hearing loops and credit card readers and that type of thing. So it doesn't mean replacing counter clerks or robots or anything like that. It simply means being much more customer friendly and being open at times, primarily being open at times when customers need us.
Okay, thank you. I, I did understand that the post office and Royal Mail are two now quite separate organisations. But what I didn't understand, I would have sort of assumed obviously wrongly that when, when the assets were shared out, if you like, that the post office would have got the bit that they sat in. So it's a bit of a surprise to me to learn that your bit is owned by the Royal Mail. So what, what do you think Royal Mail's plans will be for that building? Have you any indication on that at all?
I don't, I'm sorry. They tend to use those buildings in previous instances. They tend to hold on to buildings and use it as an overflow for, for certain things. But I honestly couldn't.
Okay, we'd have to ask them and others.
Yes, yes.
I, I think sort of to sum it up in a sense, what, what already said here. I, I don't think actually, you, we understand that you're a private organisation, you have every right to do this. And it's reassuring that you intend to continue all the services. I think the problem with the Farnham proposal is more than anything, it's just the location. It's just a very bad road to, to move into, in fact. It's very narrow. I've shown you the pictures and so on. And you'll get quite a lot of public pushback in that aspect of it. As councillor Beaman said, there was a petition drawn up, which got about eighteen hundred signatures. And they, they were your own customers from just outside the post. I was one of the people on a couple of Saturdays helping to collect the signatures. And there was quite a strong feeling, I have to tell you, that it just wasn't a good thing to do. People are actually quite fond of the post office actually in that location. It's been there for a long time. And they're just not happy, the Farnham public, with the idea of it moving into the back of Smiths on this poor location. Not, not anything against Smiths. If it was going to be moved, moved into, I think councillor Beaman said Elphick's. If you moved into Elphick's, which is just across the road, it, it wouldn't be the same sort of problem at all, you know. And a company like where Elphick's might welcome it actually, because having a post office in your department store would bring quite a lot of extra footfall and so on. So that, that seems to me to be a good alternative idea if you, if you're willing to consider it. If in fact you don't feel, from all the feedback from the consultation, it doesn't prove to be correct. Anyway, can I ask councillor Jim Edwards if you'd like to say anything in, in conclusion to all?
Thank you very much. And thanks again for coming to speak to us today. It's clear from the, what you're saying that there's a sound business case here. It's successful. Your rollout has proved successful throughout the UK. The, my main issue really is, is as, as the chairman's already said, is, is the access to the WH Smiths site. And it's a, it's physically very difficult to pass people or to access services if there's a wheelchair or, or a buggy or something on the pavement. So that's an issue that you really need to think about. If you can find another site of a similar nature within the town, I think that would be much appreciated by everybody. I understand the business case. My local bank, I used, I used to be part of a multinational with many branches, so I understand the, what you're trying to do. But I also had a business of my own and the local bank closed and I moved to the post office and I got excellent service. Okay? They were in, were in the co-op in Chotamill in Wayhoe. But Marks and Spencer came along and the post office closed. And we didn't have a post office for, I think, about nine months, but we managed to put it in the community centre and we have a, a community post office now. But what concerns me, if, if WH Smith's going to restructure, what happens? Because, you know, Farnham is our major town. It's a busy place. I, I, I've visited the post office in, in, in Farnham. It's a big unit, probably bigger than you'd probably need, but that's why people like it. There's plenty of space. You've got a money office and all that sort of stuff. So the only concern I have, apart from the physical aspect, is the fact that, you know, the continuity of business, because what we cannot have or cannot allow is for a post office or to go to business because the, the current owner of the business, because that's what they are, WH Smiths, they'll be a licensee or whatever, could close. Nobody knows what's around the corner. So do we have contingency plans? Should, should that happen? And secondly, with the shape of the business, obviously, as you go through from November through to December, you're probably, the busiest time is in, in that period. Do you have a flexibility to improve the services to residents? Because, you know, if you're limited to, I don't, I think you, you said three, three desks? Okay. All right. And you've got five of the current site, haven't you? Yeah, okay. So I've just, that's the only issue I have really. I understand the business case, but it's got to be suitable for the residents of Farnham. Yet I've no disagreement about you moving, but it's got to be in the right, in the right place, really. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, I, I take your point fully. And we do fully understand that nobody knows the future, as I've said to the vice chair there. That said, that's, that's the reason that WH Smiths is, is such a good fit for us, because we, we have worked for them for over twelve years. I would also say on top of that, there is a contractual obligation attached to this. So there's a certain notice period that we need to be given in the event of not wanting to run a post office going forward. And it's quite a lengthy notice period. I think it's a year. So should, should that be the case, then we would have time, hopefully, to relocate to somewhere else. We'll, we'll find a suitable, another suitable operator to work with, should we get to that. Hopefully we'll not get to that. But with such a large estate, say fifteen hundred plus branches WH Smiths have, they have over a hundred and thirty post offices. They would be talking to us quite early on if there was any difficulties and we would hopefully be able to get contingencies in place quite quickly about that. So that's as much of insurance probably as I can give because I don't know the future. But it certainly is something that we haven't not thought of.
Thank you very much for, for that, Mark. We're very pleased that you're running a public consultation next week. It's a week today, in fact, doesn't it? At Farnham Library?
Yes, at Farnham Library from half three to six, for people to drop in, ask questions, seek clarification. Just what you've done this evening and, and try and get a better understanding of the proposal. But the, the actual consultation, Mr. Chairman, is, is through the mechanisms that are in that letter. So, so it's all done above board and proper that, so, so if you could please feed through that way, that would be much appreciated.
Indeed. I do warn you to expect a big turnout actually, because Sari County Council had a similar thing at, to do with possible closure of the recycling centre. And they finished up getting a lot more people than they were expecting.
Okay, good.
But at least in your case, you're running over a longer period of time.
That's the idea, yeah.
Which will hopefully be a bit better.
I hope so.
Thanks very much for, for coming along. And I believe Wendy's kind of going to show, show you out. Right. Our next item on the agenda is service plans. I think Louise is going to introduce this and then Richard and Kelvin are going to make short presentations.
Thank you, chairman. So the service plans are an important opportunity for this overview and scrutiny committee, along with the others, to, to have a look at what's planned for the next three years. Because this set of service plans are now taken over three financial years from two thousand and nineteen to twenty-two. They're essentially a management tool. So you'll see here quite a lot of information that you haven't probably seen in the past. But it is an opportunity for you to see what the emphasis is and whether it's covering the areas that you think it should be covering. You'll see in the service plans that we've put in a couple of columns to help particularly on with connection to resources. So there's a column about whether any additional resources are needed. And the last column is really a sort of a risk-type issue. What's the impact of not completing the action? So I won't say any more because my colleagues, Richard and Kelvin, will take you through them. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Richard Homewood, head of environmental services, now responsible for the licensing function of the council. I'll be very brief. I know you've got a very busy agenda. You, you'll recall that towards the end of last year, is it going to work? Oh, it is. There you go. Towards the end of last year, the, the council adopted its new corporate strategy. And there were some key themes in that about people, places and prosperity. And we, we are trying to align services to deliver those key themes in the corporate strategy and ensure that we're, we're prioritising the right things. So those key priorities were protecting people, serving people, protecting, enhancing the place and supporting prosperity and economic development. And we've, you've recently seen from the chief executive the announcement of slightly reshaping services to align them with those priorities and ensure that we can deliver what's in the corporate strategy. So certainly in terms of licensing, it is about protecting people and about protecting the place. And it seems like ensuring safe travel, ensuring safety when enjoying entertainment in the borough, ensuring safety when enjoying leisure activities in licensed premises, protecting animal welfare, that's, that's a key area, preventing exploitation by businesses and by individuals, and helping to prevent crime in partnership with the other agencies that deal with those sorts of things. So some key areas there. And in terms of licensing, there are two main areas. One is the, the licensing of taxis and private hire vehicles. Over three hundred and fifty drivers, several hundred vehicles are licensed in, in the borough. And that is a, a major piece of work to keep that going. There are some key issues coming up in the next year, and I apologise that the years are wrong at the top of this slide. It should be nineteen twenty. It's amended on the handout I've given you. There is new legislation. You heard some announcement recently about DBS checks, disclosure barring service checks on drivers, because there is concern about the, the conduct of some drivers and the safety of some drivers. So some tighter checks on drivers. But I'm pleased to say that in Waverley, we already carry out DBS checks on all our drivers. So we're, we're, we're well ahead of the game on that one. There's also discussion about some tighter controls of out-of-town vehicles, where vehicles come from another borough into Waverley and ply their trade and, and that sort of thing as well. So welcome proposals there to tighten things up. So welcome proposals there to tighten things up around, certainly around private hire vehicles, especially there is concerns there. Amongst all that, there are some proposals to introduce three-year driving licences for drivers as opposed to the annual driving licences. And there've been some concerns expressed about that, but we are pretty confident that we will manage that process and will still be able to ensure that drivers are brought to account should anything untoward occur with them. So that's important as well. Perhaps a bigger development there is the National Anti-Fraud Network Register. I'm sorry, the acronym's the wrong way round, it should be NAFN. And that's a register nationally of suspended and revoked drivers' licences. So when somebody applies to us for a licence, we can check to make sure they haven't have a licence revoked or suspended with another council elsewhere in the country. So another key move forward, if you like, in ensuring public safety around licensed vehicles. And one of the things, given the budget pressures we're facing over the next few years, we certainly need to review our charging policy to make sure that we're recovering all of the costs involved in administering licensing functions and enforcing the licensing regime in the town. And that applies to licensed liquor premises as well as taxis and private hire vehicles, because that's another key area of the work we do around licensed premises, where we work very closely with the police to ensure crime and disorder isn't increased because assumption and antisocial behaviour, a nuisance, isn't being caused by licensed premises being badly managed by the licensees. So a whole range of activity there about protecting the public and ensuring that you're safe when you go out to enjoy your evenings out, and that you can get home safely in a vehicle, and trust the driver, and trust that the vehicle is safe to travel in. The other side of licensing is the Environmental Protection Team, something you may not be so familiar with, but they deal with animal welfare licensing, and there's new legislation been introduced. And in the fees and charges that went to the budget meeting this year, there was a whole new structure for animal welfare licensing under this new legislation. It focuses very much more on how the premises are managed in terms of looking after the animals and ensuring their welfare. And it again introduces the concept of licensing for up to three years. So if the premises is very well managed, then they could have a three-year licence as opposed to having to renew their licence every year. So that's about focusing our efforts on the problem premises and lifting the burden on the businesses that are run well and look after the animals well. So a key change in legislation there that we're having to manage, and we're getting a lot of correspondence and exchanges with operators of these businesses about their concerns about how the new licensing regime will work. Issues around scrap metal dealers and site licences for scrap metal sites, lots of issues in the borough and elsewhere in the country about metal theft, lead being pinched off of church roofs, this sort of thing. And again, very close working with the police on that to share intelligence and share information on what's going on. We can ask to see the records at these premises to make sure that they're not buying lead from people who haven't obtained it legitimately and keep an eye on what they're up to. And lastly, street trading. We licence street traders in the borough, and certainly there's a review of the street trading policy due next year, in 2020. We normally do it every five years. And that's when we look at things like which roads will we allow street trading in, which roads will we allow it by consent, and which ones will we not allow at all. So will it be engaging with members and engaging with the community on their views about street trading as well? I know that can cause some concerns on occasions. I know in Cranley, there was an issue with a kebab van, I think, in the road, and indeed elsewhere. And we've got a kebab van outside here, but it doesn't cause any problems at the moment, so that's fine. So it's about allowing business to operate without causing nuisance and inconvenience to the residents, and ensuring that people operating street trading don't exploit the public by selling counterfeit goods or by selling, you know, unsafe food and that sort of thing. So that's really all of the licensing work that's going on. That's the challenges for the next 12 months in terms of the licensing teams. I'm happy to take any questions on that.
Thank you, Richard, for a very clear presentation. Any questions from members? Patricia?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr Homewood, one of the really important aspects of licensing is to ensure that taxi drivers are fit and proper people.
Yes.
They are required to, by policy, to notify us of any charges or convictions, whether they're to do with personal issues or motoring issues. Previously, because we've required them to renew their licence on a yearly basis, as you have indicated, we're now moving to three years. For some reason, not all of our drivers seem to be aware that they should be notifying us, or they fail to notify us. Bearing in mind our requirements to ensure they're fit and proper, how can, do you have a way that we could ensure that we have a better knowledge of their personal convictions, charges, whatever you call them, during that three-year period? Because, you know, people might fail to tell us because they could lose their licence and will wait for the three-year period when we were required to see a copy of their licence. Have I explained myself well or incoherently? Thank you.
No, very clear, Chair, very clear councillor with your concerns, and we share those concerns. And that's why this proposal, which originally was put forward probably five to 10 years ago, the idea of three-year licences, has taken so long to get anywhere at all because of concerns about exactly what you've said there, that will people tell us? And we do have odd occasions when people fail to tell us, and I'm sure, you know, at the licensing committee, you'll be aware that occasionally we've brought drivers forward and they've actually failed to tell us, and we found out through other means. And we do get information from other sources about drivers, we get complaints about drivers, and when we call them in for interview, we'll check their records then and see. So it is a concern, but we do have other ways of getting information about drivers, and often other drivers give us information, which gives us cause to call people and interview them as a result. It's a very close network, and, you know, you pick up a lot of information from that network. And I can't go into all the details of that, obviously, but we do have ways of gaining intelligence and information to ensure that we can be as sure as possible that we don't let anyone slip through the net. But it is a concern we have certainly about this new way of working.
Sam's a question.
Thank you, councillor. Mr Chair, just wanted to know, the DBS checks, are they standard or are they enhanced? And because I know there's a big difference between the two, especially with young people and sexual offences and stuff like that. And what, how much does that cost our council? Does it cost us a lot? Are we putting that cost on to the driver?
I deal with a second pass first, that's easy. The cost is passed on to the driver, so it doesn't cost the council anything. And they have to do it themselves, it's not the council that does it. They have to do it and then produce the evidence to us. The question about whether it's enhanced or not, I'm afraid I can't give you that answer tonight. I'm pretty sure it's an enhanced one, but I'd go away and check that for you and come back to you certainly.
Move on to Kelvin's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. As you all know, the vast majority of my service falls under this ONS committee, so you've got 11 pages of quite detailed service plans in front of you. In essence, you've got, it's business as usual this year, so it's a three-year service plan that covers business as usual as well as some cross-cutting projects and themes. So what I was proposing to do is just do a quick overview and summary for you, obviously can answer questions on the detail, but just thought it'd be helpful. Obviously, six services, certainly, so that's leisure, Parks and Countryside, community services, Careline, Arts and Culture, and Waverley Training Services. So leisure, so as well as the other business as usual, sports development and the like, the key focus of the leisure team is the contract management of places leisure, who operate our five leisure centres. So that's the key focus of the team. Going forward, over the next three years, we have the Leisure Investment Programme. So the administration, you see, council have committed 3.2 million pounds to the investment and refurbishment of Godalming and Farnham Leisure Centre. So that is in process now, will be kicking off in 2019, with a view to be finishing in the next 18 months. And also a significant investment in a new leisure facilities in Cranley. So at the moment, within the service plans, you'll see we're going through a consultation. This is really to look at where best to situate any investment, be that a new leisure centre or a remodeling of the current one. Our objective is to get that finished probably by the end of March, early April. So that's a long way down the line. And then also, a key focus will be the re, bringing together the health and wellbeing strategy to link in with the work you did on the health inequalities work that this committee brought forward, to bring those together with as well our age and wealth strategy to so that they sit under one key corporate strategy. Parks and Countryside, so we do tree risk management, we do countryside services, but the key focus, I would say, for the team is ground maintenance contract, and that's the management of Glendale, who look after all that ground maintenance for us. As you're probably all aware, we are looking to renew our new ground maintenance contract by November 2019, so this year. So the key focus of the team early on is now preparing that specification for tender and procurement as we speak, in essence, so that someone's in place and mobilised ready for November. We also have a very clear aspiration to improve the visitor centre at French and Great Ponds, which is something that struggles to cope with demands during the hot summer periods. You know, we have queues, we have all the way back down Baker Lane, it's something that's served its time and cannot cope at the moment. We're also looking at rearranging the car park area there. At the moment, we only charge for parking during the summer period, really, from Easter through to the end of the summer, and it's man. So our rangers spend all day just collecting tickets as opposed to a much more modern way of parking, where you come in and there's a pay-to-pay machine of some ilk. So that creates great sort of traffic jams down the lane on busy days as well. So the whole Heathrow Hub really is looking to try and improve that visitor attraction and visitor service. And then one of the other key elements, we've got a playing pitch strategy, we've got a playground strategy, I think my service look at it and say we need a green spaces strategy, so what to fit in with our local plan, to look at seal contribution, to say how do we maintain the beautiful green spaces that exist in this borough? I'm running through this quickly, obviously I'll answer questions later. Then I've got the community services team. So this is a key focus. So this is the team that look after the voluntary sector, basically overseeing the SLA arrangements, the three-year SLA agreements that we've got with voluntary sectors such as Hopper, CAB, our community centre for the elderly. So that is something, a key focus for the team, and we bring back quarterly reviews and an annual review of those. They also oversee the community safety team, so that links in with what Richard was saying on licensing. This is about maintaining Waverley as a safe borough to be in, to work closely with our partners, the police and health and children's services and the like. And then also, this doesn't sit under this service, but they also look after the economic development team, and that was discussed at last night's ONS committee. Then we talk about Careline a little bit later on on the agenda today, just to give you a little bit more information. The Careline services are community alarms, that's helping generally at the moment older people stay independent and live at home for longer. So it's about, it's a 24-hour alarm centre, so you press the button and there's a 24-hour call centre that will take that call and arrange for either emergency services or neighbours or family to be called. It's a fantastically well-received service, but we, I'll repeat it later, but what we are keen to do is, we know there's a need and we want to grow that service over the next three years. So the key thing is raising the profile of the services we go through the next year and then probably into the following years. Can we expand that service to offer more than just the general pendant that we offer at the moment to attract a different sort of members of the public to take on the service? So the key focus there, linking in with that sort of more commercial approach, is to grow the service. Arts and Culture, so it's what makes, I think, Waverley one of these special places. So we've got a key cultural strategy action plan. The culture strategy's been in place now for, I think it's coming into its second year, and that's key that we continue to work with our partners such as UCA, Cranley Arts Centre, the Maltings, to help deliver those cultural services, maximise funds that we can bring in to the borough. You know, the other key focus is understanding that culture has a role to play within health and making sure that we link what we offer to improving the health and wellbeing of our residents. And under Arts and Culture, there is two halls that we have within our own management, and that's the Borough Hall and Memorial Hall. So that's the Borough Hall in Godalming and Memorial Hall in Farnham. And the key focus of this service is to make that as accessible as possible and to make money. And last, but not least, we have Waverley Training Services, that you received a presentation at the last meeting. This is our service, it offers work-based learning, apprenticeships, as well as a study programme and works for those needs, those young people that are not in educational employment in our borough. So it's offstage good now, so we're moving forward to look at our business plan and quality improvement plan, A to become offstage outstanding at the next meeting, but also to grow the service appropriately as we go forward the next three years. That goes without saying, we need to concentrate on maintaining the performance levels of our learners, ensure they achieve overall achievements, or they gain their qualifications, and they do that in a timely manner. So the key focus for Waverley Training Services is not that it takes you 15 years to do your apprenticeship, you do it within the 18 months allotted time, and we make sure they progress and move on from there. And then the key focus for us is maintaining the number of study programme learners, so those are our needs. So we have up to 40 a year, pretty much, that we deliver a very key service to help them get ready for employment, and then also increase the number of apprenticeships, our work-based learning, be that within the borough, but also more widely with our public sector colleagues across Surrey and into the health sector as well. So those are the, that was a key quick run-through of the six services that sit under this ONS committee, and hopefully it gives you an overview of the detail that you've got in front of you. Any questions, Chair?
Thank you, Kelvin. Any question? Councillor Whitman, let's Whitman.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. If I can be a bit naughty, bearing in mind the arts and culture side, could I just put in a plug for Godalming Museum right this moment? Wearing another hat of mine as chairman of the Godalming and Mayan Association, right this moment, for another two and a half weeks till March the 2nd, there is an art exhibition on at Godalming Museum in conjunction with Godalming's twin towns of Juani in France and Mayan in Germany. It marks the centenary of the end of World War One, and even though in Juani it was in a massive modern building, I think it sits beautifully in our little ancient building over there in Godalming. Do please come and have a look. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kelvin?
I just would like to express my thanks to the Careline, who saved my grandmother the other week. So I think that the service that we provide for residents, whether they're vulnerable or not, is brilliant. And yeah, so please pass on my personal gratitude to the Careline team.
Thank you for that, Sam. We've got a Careline item later on, later on in the agenda. Any other questions? We have a recommendation, actually, that we've got to consider, which is whether or not we have any policy recommendations to the executive. I'm not sure that we have, to be honest, because I can't see anything much to say. They're very good, high-level presentations, but I'm not sure we're in the position to make any particular, unless anyone feels that anything particular they would like to point out to the executive.
Many thanks and please keep doing the same.
Yes, well, I think that sums up.
And as the portfolio holders here, if she takes notice that it is important to keep all these things going and then the question from our audience earlier at the beginning, then your concerns will be less because Waverley does try and get involved with everything. But a lot of people don't know what we do and they'll sit back and say, oh, don't go anywhere, there's nothing to do. It is there, but it's trying to tell people that they can, there are millions of things. You know, I'm trying to get my next door neighbour to wear a thing round her neck, but she won't. You know, so she just, you know, bangs on the window, but it's there, but she doesn't know anything about it. I keep telling her.
Thank you, Chairman. We've come to the third quarter performance report, which goes from October to December 2019. It's a really good quarter for this area of the services under your committee. All the performance indicators met their target. A couple of the service plan actions were off target out of the 39 service plan actions. So they were doing pretty well and there is action to get them back on track. Couple of few notable events that I think Kelvin put in his covering report about the Heatham Hub getting planning approval, the Meals on Wheels celebrating their second anniversary and a lot of work and time and effort going into supporting local businesses on a feasibility study into the introduction of a business improvement district. At appendix A, which is on page 84, you will see a new page, which is a further detailed breakdown of the budget, which you won't be surprised was asked for by the value for money ONS committee, which may or may not be of interest to this committee as well. So I commend it and obviously Kelvin's here if you need any questions answered.
Any questions, members? Again, it's a very big subject to cover in such a short period of time, isn't it? And again, we're asked to put forward any recommendations to senior manager of the executive. Again, I'm not sure that we have any specifically, do we? Unless anyone wants to suggest anything, by any issue they want to bring before the senior management of the executive.
I just would like to congratulate the officers. I think this is a very clear report. It lists very clearly the successes in the teams and the staff and the officers and I think it's very well communicated to us as councillors. So well done.
Thank you. Right. We'll move along to item nine then, changes to health arrangements. Again, it's Louise and Kelvin. Another big subject.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to launch into this and then Kelvin's going to take over. So the new health landscape is massive and it will have massive implications for our residents, all to the good, I'm hoping. So since 2014, we've been having a different territory in health. We've been talking about sustainable transformation plans and now they're called integrated care systems, which we'll hear about a little bit more. And we've been waiting for a long time for the NHS 10 year plan, which they've now called their long term plan. It seems to have lost its tenure, I don't know why. But anyway, there are five main improvements which they're looking for in this plan. They're looking to do things differently, but most importantly, they're looking to give people control over their health. And you'd think this is probably something that's happened in the past, but not to the degree that they want it to happen in the future. They want to encourage more collaboration between GPs and community services. GP practices, you know, are businesses in their own right and I think, you know, possibly been criticised in the past about not sort of joining together with some of the things that are going on, even in our own leisure centres, sometimes they're not aware of some of the walking for health and referrals that we provide. Also an increase on NHS organisations working with local partners. That's us. For the first time, we are now in the picture as a borough council. So, and that's again about the integrated care system, which we'll come on to. The second one is going to sound very familiar, but that's about preventing illness and tackling health inequalities, all the stuff that we looked at in the report that you did last year. Hoping to tackle obviously the significant causes of ill health, which we looked into in that report, smoking, drinking, type 2 diabetes, et cetera. They're wanting to increase their workforce, more nurses, more clinical, more medical school places, which I think is welcome because we know that there's a lot of GP practices that aren't fully staffed and more roots into the NHS. And they want to make it a better place to work for their existing staff so they don't leave. So the fourth one is making a better use of digital and data and technology, which has to be the right way to, and we heard from our anecdotal evidences from our residents that the access to GP surgeries and times and appointments and that sort of thing is sometimes difficult. So they're finding different ways to try and do this. So sort of FaceTime with your GP or whatever is, and that might not be for everybody's taste, but for some younger people who want to just get a quick sort of consultation, that might be the best thing for them. Do it on your phone. So getting the most out of taxpayers' investment and just continuing to make sure that we make better use of combined buying power and reducing duplication. So the national context is all about greater integration around place. They want us to concentrate or us joined up with the NHS and our colleagues in Surrey County Council to really look at our communities and to see what the priorities are for our own residents, rather than the sort of the wider national context. Because, you know, us in Waverley may have specific health needs that North West Surrey might not have, rural isolation, we've talked about that already. Devolution, it's definitely a shift of the powers responsibilities down to a sort of, they call it place. So there's two terms that you'll hear quite a lot in the future is at scale, which is delivering services at scale where it makes sense to deliver them at scale. And at place is really focusing in on what our own priorities are in Waverley and Godalming, sorry, Guildford as well, which we'll come to. So integrated care system is a big one and that's called Surrey Heartlands. And that's, so there's aims and visions which we'll come on to in a minute. And the people who are involved in the Surrey Heartlands are the hospitals, the GPs, the ambulance service, Surrey County Council and that sort of thing. So at quite high level. But sitting within the integrated care system, we've got three integrated care partnerships of which we're involved on a CCG footprint, Waverley and Guildford. And at that level, we're involved and Kelvin is personally involved, which he'll hear about now. Sorry, just very quickly. So what's happening next is that there'll be shadow arrangements coming in from April 2019. And to give you the scale of it, that's all those partners, including Surrey County Council, Adult Social Care, all pooling budgets for the first time, following the pilot that happened in Manchester. Our integrated care system is the second one after Manchester. And so there's a lot of spotlight being shined on us in this area. So there'll be a plan that's going to be published in April 2019 and then there'll be five year plans as well published in the autumn.
It's probably worth noting at this point, you know, to add to a very complicated sort of makeup, that Farnham doesn't sit within Waverley and Guildford CCG. So for our Farnham colleagues, they sit within Farnham and North East Ham CCG. So to some extent, it's being replicated, what we're talking about here in Farnham, but there is a little bit of a different local makeup. So apology, they don't.
They're not part of this?
No. So we're talking about the ICP. So that's the integrated care partnership. So that's the local, the Guildford and Waverley care group. And this is who makes up that group of local partners to deliver health in this area. So we're there with Guildford, obviously, and it's good to be at the table for the first time with health colleagues discussing the preventive health requirements of our residents. The mission of the ICP. So you can read there, it's to create a partnership delivering a seamless, equitable and sustainable care to Guildford and Waverley residents. So they're desperately trying to bring these services together to work in a seamless manner. So we're constantly having discussions of breaking down at the board level about talking about, they always talk about models of care and they'll be talking about models of care again here, very health centric. But it's important that colleagues from the boroughs and districts, Guildford and Waverley, from Surrey, from Adult Social Care, that we challenge that mantra to ensure the preventative health agenda is very much part of the consideration. So how do we stop people getting into the system? So what they've done so far, there's lots of words, there's been lots of planning in essence for what Louise has said from April onwards of this year. There's been a huge amount of work and effort bringing together the ICS vision with the ICP. So they've got the co-designed vision and agreed programme architecture, which is really what areas they want to focus on, which I'll talk about a little bit more at the next slide, who the partnerships are, frameworks of governance and a high level roadmap, what sort of issues are we trying to address? Where are we now? And I think to summarise, there's been lots of talk and organisation and preparation, but I think now's the time when we need to see some mobilisation, some action, some real delivery. And that's where they talk about what they're delivering, place and scale. So the dotted, the three to the, I want to check that way, they're at scale. So the integrated children's and integrated mental health services and planned care and cancer, those are being delivered at the ICS level. But if you notice the primary care network, again, it's taken me ages to realise that's all the GPs and who they are. So that's the primary care networks. Then there's the frailty and integrated care. That's a group that's been going, but needs to sort of start really delivering here that proactive reactive care. And then independence and prevention. Now, this is where us as a borough and a district have a real role to play. So it's the first time, I think, we've got a seat properly at the table and it's quite exciting. So I have the pleasure of being the chair of the independence and prevention group, which is made up of obviously representatives from Waverley and Guildford, but also we've got the third sector, so we've got AGK there, Citizens Advice, as well as Adult Social Care, Children's Services. It's important that we get everyone round that table. You can see the words, social prescribing, community preventive care, what we're talking about, care line fits perfectly into that, the wider determinants of health. Well, you as a group know all about that and that's been fed into the ICP board. So we have our first, when I talk about action, we have our first meeting next week. We've had a lot of preparation. At present, the ICP board have set some certain targets, the objective of the steering group to design. And this has yet to be agreed by the group and I think it become less termed in a health sector. But the idea of design, a delivery model of care that promotes independent self-management and prevention of higher care needs. So what we've got to start trying to do as a group is understanding why people are entering into the health system, how can we prevent that happening? It is about people taking responsibility for their own care, how we can promote that and help that take place, but it's also helping people live at home and what can we do within the home environment to stop them going to hospital? There's quite a big challenge for the group. I think with all of this, they talk about the workforce for the NHS. I think just from our first initial meetings, you know, if they want to take prevention and independence seriously, a budget needs to follow. We need to see some support from the ICP as a programme manager or project manager to work with this group to ensure we deliver on the objectives that we want to achieve. Because it's everyone, it's not my day job to run this and, you know, to keep that focus, I think we need to feed that back. But it's a very exciting time. You know, we want, the ICP, I speak, we want to make a difference. It wants, it's got to equality of life, you know, reduce health inequality, improve mental wellbeing, longer healthy life expectancy, these are all, we can really make a difference to these. You know, the quality of care, you can see sustainability, better, the amount of, just when you sit around and talk duplication, we talked briefly about the GP surgeries. One of the first sessions I was at, I think it actually might have been in Farnham and North East Ham's actually, and they were very excited about, they had just designed and commissioned a Walks for Health scheme. And I went, hang on a minute, we've run that out of the leisure centre already with volunteers and they put a significant sum of money towards that. So that we've got to work together to remove that, you know, the overlap to become a more sustainable service. So that ends that. But it's very, it's exciting times, it's a huge change in landscape that we, Louise and I personally, I sat at the table, it's time for Waverley Borough, we can influence the health agenda.
Thank you Kelvin. Any questions for Kelvin?
Thank you, Chairman. You said that Manchester had already done this first thing. So therefore are we the first, what I call rural area? Because you can't compare Manchester to Waverley and, you know, it's easier to put everything together in the middle of Manchester for everybody, but it's almost, I'd have thought, I mean, it all, I hate to be, it all sounds wonderful, but where we live and how we live here, it's completely different. So, I mean, is it, is it actually, I feel awful, is it achievable? I mean, you know, it all sounds wonderful and everybody's going to say, oh, how lovely and marvellous. But, you know, it's just knowing where everybody's little houses are for isolation and things, it just, I just feel it can't, I don't want to be negative, but everybody's going to be disappointed. Are we dreaming something?
I think the exciting thing about this is this business of it, it's looking at the place, it's looking at our communities. So yes, we are very different to the sort of the wider Manchester model in a sort of very urban area. But the good thing about it is it's using that business intelligence, it's using the health indicators of our own local people and what they need, whether it's looking at, you know, obviously things like dementia, we've got in the last health profile, we've got a sort of higher incidence now of type 2 diabetes. So we're focusing in on what our actual communities want. So I agree with you and there has, we're all feeling a sort of little bit sort of like, woo, this is all very big and how do we fit in? But I think it's a good message and the King's Fund, who are obviously one of those sort of expert organisations that look very, very carefully at what the government's proposing here. I was reading today that, you know, this has to be supported, it is a good model, I feel. So let's give it a go.
I suppose the flip side of that as well is, it's not working at the moment. You know, we all hear of how the NHS, how the AIN, you know, accident emergencies being used, you know, the hospitals are struggling, you know, there needs to be a different way. And yes, let's be honest, there's a huge amount that needs to happen to really make a big difference, but preventative health is on the agenda. It's never, it's never even been talked about in that sort of, in that hospital environment. When I went to prevent, when I went to the first board meetings, they talked about preventative health and it was preventing someone going from, I think it was from the doctors to acute health needs, it was almost, they were in the system, it was about preventing them getting worse. There's got to be a change of approach. I agree, you know, what lessons can we learn from Manchester? Who knows? But there's got to be something and I think this provides an opportunity to perhaps push that preventive health agenda a little bit harder to try and aid what's not working brilliantly as we speak now, unfortunately.
I think this is just fantastic, really, to be honest. I think, you know, I know Waverley do do a lot for residents and it boils down to communication. But this is an example where we are trying our best and I know you will try your best. I've got great confidence in you and your team. And this is, you know, like you say, give it a go. I think that there's lots that in our area that can be improved and, but if we look, you know, five, 10 years ago, where we've come from. So, and dementia care, care for the elderly, the vulnerable, the lonely, you know, we're all, we're going to be there one day, aren't we?
I'm already there.
I'm already there.
So, um, you know, and, and again, you know, it's not about me, my father has dementia, he's sixty-five. Um, and, and this is really important. We get this right, you know, it's for future generations, the now and in, in the future. So, yeah, well done.
If I could make a couple of comments, we learned through the Health Inequalities Report how important all the things that Waverley does is in relation to public health. And this idea of devolving things, that is a great idea. But I think just the one negative thing I have, worry I have about it is, all this requires resources, actually. And at the same time as the government's cutting back on what they're giving Surrey and, and Waverley and other borough councils, they're expecting us to do more. Now, we should try and do more, of course we should, but, you know, there's a, there's a problem there, that we need some resources to do all this sort of stuff, you know? And I don't know if you have any feeling about that, but we're not specifically given any budget by government to do any health type things and that we're being asked to do more. And, and it's a good thing that we are, and the Health Inequalities Report identified that in everything we do, we should be taking health into account, you know? But resources still count, you know? I don't know if you have any comment on that, Kelvin?
I s- I s- I suppose my comment will be, um, this will be the challenge back to the ICP board, you know? We will, um, undoubtedly it's taken probably several months to get the first meeting together simply because of my time resource and, and getting it done. If they are serious about delivering that model of prevention independent, this group, it needs to come with a budget and that will be the challenge. Well, I, I'm not predicting what's going to happen at the first meeting, but I will certainly be putting forward as a chair that there needs to be ICP support for this strand of work. Otherwise, you're, you're correct, it's, there's a fear that it won't, nothing will change because people don't have the resource.
And just another small point, it's a trivial point really, but it's a bit confusing when we talk about Guildford and Waverley, because Farnham is actually part of Waverley. So you're actually talking about Guildford and two thirds of Waverley and then we're talking about Farnham and North East Hampshire. I don't know if there's anything you can do about that, but, um, you know, Waverley's just got as much responsibility for the Farnham bit as they have for the rest of Waverley, which is the Guildford bit, if you like, or the Guildford and the rest of it. I, 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 you probably, there's no way around that, but it's, it is a, it's confusing for people, you know?
Firstly, my, um, Careline Services Manager, David Brown, would like to offer his apologies. He's, he's really not very well at all and we had a conversation, he didn't sound great at all. So you've got to listen to me for a little bit longer, I do apologise. Um, from the, from the last meeting, um, it was thought a good idea to bring forward an update on sort of the Careline service. Um, the paper's in front of you, all I would really say is this is already a successful service. Um, and in hearing personal, um, stories of, of what the team and what the service offers is, is tremendously rewarding and we, and we see that sort of on a daily basis really. But it's, it's successful in two ways, helping people live independently at home, but also runs it a surplus for us as, as a council, so contributes, enables us to deliver more services, um, for those people, those residents that need it. It's got a tremendously loyal team of installers, so in essence, um, we've got four that are spread around, around the borough, um, who look after different patches and have been with us for quite a length of time now and, and install the, um, alarm system that can link up. Um, what we've been doing over the last sort of year or so really is looking at our, our backroom system, it sounds a bit boring, but what, what was happening previously is our installers were out in the field, they would get someone to fill in a bit of paper that would need to come back in to be put on the system. It took a period, a period of time before someone who signed up to be on the, um, community alarm system, before they actually appeared and were able to be serviced by us. We now do it directly in the field, so as soon as they enter into details, they go straight into the database at Chidester and they're on the system. So we've been doing a lot of, uh, of focus on the systems and improving that service. But going forward, we're really keen to, um, serve the need we think exists within, within Waverley. It's very easy for us to, there is an aging population in Waverley, we know it's, it's high even in, in, um, in Surrey's sort of, um, metrics. But also, we're also aware that we're a very rural borough and there are people that live in isolation and, and loners. So we need to use the service and get the message out and market the service a lot more effectively over the coming years. And that's something the team and David and the team are really focused on. So we'd be looking to put a marketing, um, programme together, but also really the team leader to get out and sell the service and link with our partners. Um, we should be aware that obviously there's, this is a competitive market. We had the post office here earlier, it's quite strange, we have Age UK that offer a similar, um, service to our residents as do Care UK. So there's, it's not just a monopoly that we can just grow, we have to be efficient and we have to, um, offer a good service. So the next stage of our development, once we've grown, hopefully, is what other services do our, um, residents and clients want? So the most popular one that we have as well as the community alarm is you can link it to your smoke, smoke alarm. So it's not, so for example, so if the smoke alarm goes off, that alerts the call centre, who can then call the police? That is almost with every community alarm we're now, um, offering, being put in as well. So it's a really good additional service, but there are lots more services like that. We work on a very basic pendant, I was talking with the portfolio holder earlier, you know, we need to attract different people, I wouldn't feel comfortable with a pendant, but the reality is if I had a watch or something a little bit more stylish, that might attract a different younger group that would still benefit from the community alarm. So all in all, I'd just like, um, members to realise that it is a successful service already in both, in the service it offers and in its performance, but we would really like help and we want to grow the service and offer more help than those people that need it. Thank you.
Um, thank you very much, Kelvin. I always find this a, a very exciting project because, um, I do know how it can save lives and make absent families feel better about being away from family members who are on their own, that they feel that perhaps there is help at hand should there be a problem. Looking to, um, increase your clientele, as it were, I take it you do already work with the medical centres to make them aware of your service?
Yeah, we, we do, but it's a, I think we've got to invest a little bit more time in those relationships and those partnerships, be that with the GPs, with adult social care, with people coming out of the hospital. Yes, there is a link, but if you looked at, um, the performance, we're circa, what's it, thirty, forty referrals a month? You know, we should be getting more than that if we can really work our networks effectively. So that's something we definitely need to focus on more going forward.
Thank you, Chairman. Are there other companies that do it? Because I was on the end of one for five years for my lady next door, but that didn't come from East Hampshire District Council where I was. It, it was a service provided by something that the lady subscribed to and, you know, I was always called because she was always leaning on her kitchen counter and it went off. Um, she always apologised, but, um, it was, it's a brilliant service, but I presume there are other providers?
Yes, yeah, it i- it is a competitive market. I think our unique selling point is we will install the equipment. So a lot of, um, of our competition really are national providers, so they'll post it, post the, the box and everything to you to, to install, but obviously we're, we're local, so we actually install it for you and there's no upfront costs from us as a council, whereas you generally would pay, um, upfront for those sorts of services. Very good, don't, I'm not denigrating their services, but we have what I like to think is a local, unique selling points where we can install it, we can be out to meet, we would do regular checks, um, which our other client, other competition can't yet offer.
Yeah, thank you, Kelvin. Just a quick point actually, I think the idea of connecting to things like smoke alarms and presumably carbon monoxide alarms and so on, but they've all got to become internet connected for that to what really don't they? Yeah, the old fashioned type, I've got a smoke alarm in the hall that's forever going off actually, you wouldn't want to be connected to that and tell you. If you don't close the kitchen door, it goes off. So there's a bit, the, the more modern ones are connected to internet and so on, aren't they?
So we use a ton stall equipment, which is a specific type of equipment that talks to our call centre in essence. So the, the smoke alarms, that's, I'm, I'm not sure how, I don't know how sensitive they are, but they are, they are basically linked through the system that we plug into the phone line. So that there is some sort of wireless connection, yeah.
Um, yes, um, this report provides an update on the community meal service, that transition from the Royal Voluntary Service, which was previously called the Meals and Wheels Service in January two thousand and sixteen. The new freshly cooked meal service is delivered by three local, um, providers, Hazelway Community Centre, Brightwell's Gostrey, Rowley Centre for the Community, and then the fourth provider is our own staff restaurant. Since the day of transfer, the meal service has gone from strength to strength. Um, on the day of transfer, we were really pleased that every client did receive a meal. It was, um, quite, um, a task to get everybody, um, up and running, but that was great, everybody received a meal. Um, we currently have, um, a hundred and fifty-two people across Waverley, um, and it's quite a high turnover, so it fluctuates, you know, we can lose, um, a number of people each month, particularly through the winter months, we tend to see a, a decline in the clients and then we build back up again. Um, there's been some challenges with the meals, um, because it was a freshly cooked service, um, we had, um, for the first sort of couple of weeks, even a month, we had some difficulties around keeping the meals to the correct temperature because they weren't sort of heated, reheated like the, um, old apetito meals to a very high temperature. Obviously the freshly cooked meals were slightly lower temperature, so we needed to keep them warmer. Um, but we, they, everybody worked together and we kind of solved that solution very quickly. Going forward, um, the four providers, two of the providers are actually nearly at capacity. They are able to provide up to fifty meals a day on top of the meals that they're providing for the centres on, in the, the community, um, centres, that they provide meals for older people. Um, and there's still, um, some growth within the Cranley Rowleys area, so that, that's great, we've still got some growth there. We are looking at, um, when we do reach capacity, if, um, we want to sort of share out some of the areas, make them slightly different, um, so that, you know, maybe that we'll sort of swap some of the areas, or that, you know, we might sort of look at whether there's a potential of another provider, but we're not quite there yet and we're, we're working with providers, um, in case that was to sort of happen. The meals, um, price, um, has stayed the same for two years. One of the things that the centres have found that it's taken them a couple of years to really understand, um, the cost to them, um, because they, they are now running the services themselves. So we, um, didn't have an increase in the first year, but obviously from the first of February, they, um, um, will have all had an increase. Uh, what we try and remind the client that they're not just receiving a meal, they are receiving a visit, a well, um, you know, what we'd call a, a sort of wellbeing check. And what we have found is that, you know, on occasions, you know, we've been able to refer them to the right agencies if, when the, the volunteer has gone to meet the client that they've been concerned. Um, we're really pleased with how it's going, the centres have absolutely embraced it, they feel it is a really valuable part of the service that they deliver, they want to continue delivering it. Um, you know, in all, you know, we've been delighted with it, we all continue working with the centres, we're there to provide support. Um, yeah, for us it's, it's been a great success.
Okay, but I've said it before actually, I think it is a great success for Waverley to have done this and carried it on when Surrey withdrew their subsidy towards it and we've carried on, provided actually a better service than there was before. So congratulations to the officers for doing it. Okay, um, next thing, I, the next thing the agenda was the-
Well, can I just, sorry-
Sorry, do you want to say something?
Sorry, Katie. Um, I, I'm aware that, um, Waverley perhaps hadn't planned to be a major partner in this, how's it coping?
I have to say, they, they've embraced the challenge actually. We started with only eleven clients on ev- you know, on average daily and I think we're now up to sort of thirty, thirty-five. I think what's been lovely about, um, the staff restaurant is that we've actually, our staff volunteer, our staff use their volunteers' times and they're going out and volunteering and actually they get to see, you know, some of our more vulnerable residents. Is it the perfect place for it? I don't know, we're still working with sort of local centres to whether it should, you know, eventually move to a local centre. It's not something that we, um, feel that it should necessarily stay, um, at Waverley, but I have to say they really rose to the challenge and, and they're providing a brilliant service for us.
Okay. Oh, Sam, you want to say something?
Sorry, just a quick question. Um, are schools a possibility, um, for, to support you guys? Because you're doing a fantastic job. Um, and I know schools are doing more fresh cooking, um, I know, well, my daughter's starting in September, but already we've been sent menu options and you choose your menu and you know exactly what your child's eating, you know that they're eating a healthy option. So is that something that's, that's a possibility?
I mean, yeah, I think that's any, we can look at anything like that, to be honest. We, we're really, it's, it's taken the two years and it's now and we had to have a workshop meeting with them to sort of talk about how it had gone, that some of them are saying actually we're now nearly at the point of reaching, um, the amount of meals we can produce. So yes, if, if, you know, the, it does sort of continually, we're meeting saturation point, we are going to have to look at either other providers or people go on a waiting list, which would not be necessarily satisfactory, so we would always want to look, you know, if there are. But yeah, that's a very good option we could keep in mind.
Um, we, we've, item twelve on the agenda, we've deferred to the next meeting, this was a report in the Memorial Hall, because we've got such a big agenda this time and also because so many of the things that Kelvin was already having to report on, and it's a, a big subject as well, so we're leaving that to next time. Um, Wendy's now going to talk to us about the work programme, but before we do that actually, there was one thing I should have brought up at the end of the post office one. Wendy asked me to bring this up, that how should Waverley respond to the post office consultation and suggested that we discuss that and make any recommendation that we wish to, to the executive? How did members feel that Waverley should respond? Should we, I mean, for example, when, on the community recycling, there was a letter sent from the chief executive and, and the leader jointly, that, that was the way that one was dealt with. But in this case, there's, there's also the need to respond to the online consultation, which I think the officers will do, but do we feel there should be a le- an additional letter from the senior people at Waverley or do we not feel that? Any views on that, David?
I think all we can do is, is express our regret that it's happening and, and encourage them to continue looking at other possibilities.
Right.
Um, I, I think, I think Sam and, and yourself touched on it earlier, that they could make, perhaps make better use of, of the building they've got.
Okay.
And if they, you know, if they took the, the space they're planning to take in Smiths and put it in their existing post office, and then Royal Mail could claim back the rest of it and, and charge them less rent or something, I, I don't know. I, I would just encourage us as a council to encourage them to, to continue looking at possibilities and, and take full notice of, of all the consultation, because I can't imagine too many people are going to be in favour of the, the move.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Wendy and Emma have been taking notes of what all the members have been saying and that will be put together. But I guess the question I was trying to address is that should we try to encourage, um, a, a, you know, a response from the chief executive type level or are we happy for it just to come from the, the officers involved for the, the online consultation? Any views on that one? Sam?
Chairman, yeah, what about yourself? No, I mean to sign something?
I'd be happy to do something, but obviously the chief executive and the leader...
Yeah, I think, I actually think you're spot on with the chief executive, I think to have him to support his officers would be great in that. Obviously, we don't want any extra cost to Waverley, really, or as limited as possible, but to ensure that it is communicated in any way, because not everybody, obviously, are online.
Okay. Do you want to say something, Patricia?
Thank you, Chairman. I realise that this is very much a Farnham issue, but I do feel that the post office service is vital to the vibrancy of the whole borough, villages and towns, so I would hope that perhaps the chief executive could also express concern for the future of post offices in other parts of the borough.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, it's a good idea. Kelvin, do you want to say something?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, I think you actually covered it off, officers are obviously going to feedback on the online survey, so that was really where I was going, so that, obviously Wendy and Emma have taken notes, and I know that one of my officers, Jill's watching online, but we will do the online response, but yeah, I now know you've gone on to a different way of responding, so.
I'll certainly be responding personally as a member of the public, obviously, but if I was required to do it in behalf of Waverley, I'd be happy to do that as well. Okay, right, I think the next thing is Wendy's going to give us an update on the future work programme.
Thank you, Chairman. So I provided, I'm afraid we missed the work programme off the published agenda, but I provided copies out earlier. You'll see that we have a number of items for our June meeting, in particular, we've got our scrutiny induction for new councillors following the May elections, and then we've got two other items. I'm not sure how long the scrutiny induction item might take, we're just finalising those details, so it depends on whether we have a bit more of a workshop style, or whether we have the induction first and then have a short scrutiny meeting following the workshop, so that will be clearer in the forthcoming weeks and months, and then we've got the two deferred items from today. Looking further ahead, then we've got in September, the Leisure Centre investment, and the continuing updates from the Health Inequality Report, and from Tamzin and the Health and Wellbeing Update. And then looking into November, then we've got the Safer Waverley partnership, which is the statutory responsibility to review that. So at the moment, the only other item I've got potentially pencilled in is perhaps another look at some of the topic of loneliness, so I've got that on the programme, so, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Wendy, because there'll be a whole new committee after the May elections. I'd just like to finish by saying I'd like to thank the officers for, they put a tremendous amount of hard work into preparing for these meetings, I'd like to thank them for that, and particularly to Wendy and Emma, because they do all the organisation behind the scenes, and they had to persuade Mark Gibson to change his diary to come along and talk to us, so we're very grateful for all the organisation that they do. I think that concludes the meeting, thank you very much, members.